Dr. Colley, will you kick things off?
Right. Thank you, thank you, Trusty Dodd. Welcome and glad to have you here, Dr. Webb. This is, just as a reminder of the purpose of today, we're here, as we discussed, at the retreat. This is one of our many professional development opportunities collectively as a board that we're committing to engage in this year in relation to accreditation. Dr. Webb's presentation today is really going to walk us through some key points of what the current accreditation process looks like and also focus on some future iterations of what the subsequent changes that will be in effect for our next accreditation cycle are going to look like and how we collectively, as a team, as a group, will work through those considerations.
Thank you so much for that introduction and I am really delighted to be here. Thank you for the invitation to come and speak with you and to talk about this topic. I know you're working on some, you're having conversations that came out of the site visit that you had and we thought it might be an opportunity to come in and just, especially as there are some new trustees, just reinforce the expectations for boards, board roles and responsibilities from the accreditation lens and then talk a little bit about the way that ACCJC's processes are and standards are evolving to help you meet those expectations in a better way. So I'm really delighted to be here. You'll notice that this says facilitated by Dr. Catherine Webb, not presented by. That's because I really hope that this can be interactive. If you have questions, I'd like you to stop so that we can ask and talk about them. There were some, even some thought questions that I sent in advance or reflection questions if you had a chance to think about those. So we'll have a chance to stop and talk through some of those questions as well and your thoughts about those things as we go through. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and get started. So we'll talk about our general accreditation expectation for boards. So what accreditors everywhere, not just the ACCJC or the Accrediting Commission for Community and Junior Colleges, but just all accreditors, general expectations for board governance. We'll talk about how you can leverage this accreditation process that you're in now to really help you think about where you're going. I know you're in the midst of, or you're just about to start an education master plan process. So how can the accreditation process really help you with that? We'll have some time for you to share your reflections and insights and then we'll have a little time for us to talk about ACCJC's new standards and in particular, the new standards for boards and as I mentioned, how they're going to help you meet those expectations. Overall, accreditors have two big, broad expectations for governing boards. And you have kind of two high level things that you're doing all the time. One is that you are focused on your mission. So mission-directed and very policy-level leadership. So that's one thing that you're working on and Catherine's going to come and borrow the mouse from me for a minute.
Sure.
And if it's easier Catherine, for you to advance the slides, that's okay too. I can let you know when. So you're doing both of the, as an effective board, you're doing both of those things, both of those big, high-level tasks all the time as you're establishing your expectations of excellence for the college and for your CEO. You're doing that as you're measuring institutions' performance against those expectations and as you're holding yourselves and others, primarily your CEO, accountable for meeting those expectations. So you're setting goals at a high level and then you're charging your CEO to meet them and you're having reports showing how well, how effectively that's being done. You're also doing self-evaluation and board evaluation so that you can check in and hold yourself accountable for effective governance practices. And you're doing all of this as part of your fiduciary responsibility to the community. So yes, there's a financial piece to that, but there's also the broader representation of public interest. So you have a very important role. Those two things that you're doing, those big, broad expectations are extremely important from that fiduciary, through that fiduciary lens. And we can go to the next slide. So some of the ways that this looks in practice, so the behaviors are some of the things that you'll see yourself doing and you can say, oh yeah, we're meeting those two big, broad expectations. You're focusing on the what rather than the how. So that's what it, when an accreditor says policy-focused or policy-level leadership, that's really what we're talking about. We're saying, you're setting policies, you're saying, here's what's going to happen. You're setting the policies and big, broad goals. And then you're delegating the how piece. And we'll talk a little bit about the way that the new standards mirror that as the what rather than the how. You're also exercising that policy-focused leadership as you're representing all stakeholders. You're establishing the expectations for the fulfillment of the college mission and vision. You're delegating the responsibility for implementation of those policies to the CEO and through your CEO down to the rest of the folks at the college. And that's how you're assuring really that the college goals are being achieved. So all of that is focused on the what and keeping your eyes very focused on that. Here's what we expect and what our expectations are and trusting the folks that you've hired or the person that you've hired to make sure that the how takes care of itself. And we can go to the next slide. If you, I think the next slide is actually kind of some finer grant expectations from accreditors. And if you look at all of the, what used to be called regional accreditors, now they're just called institutional accreditors. But if you look at the standards that are used by ACCJC's peer agencies, you're going to see some themes emerging around expectations for governance at an institution. So governing, these are consistent with the kinds of expectations that you would see at the high levels from ACCT or OGP as you're meeting with other trustees across the country to talk about board effectiveness. So the expectations are that you're, again, you're establishing your goals and maintaining mission-focused leadership, that you're ensuring prudent use of funds and that there are planning processes to make sure that there's ongoing fiscal stability. You're maintaining awareness and accountability for student success through the reports that you're receiving and the like. You're hiring and evaluating and delegating to your CEO. You're setting that policy direction, staying out of the daily operations. And then you're acting as a collective, again, to get idea of a public good back to the public interest. That's consistent with your policies, your bylaws, your code of ethics and you're making sure that on a regular basis, you're checking in and saying, how are we doing in doing all of these, in meeting these expectations, in remaining consistent, in remaining a collective? And are we, are we as effective as we want to be? There are some areas that we can continue to learn and grow together as a collective. We can go to the next slide. So if you look at ACCJC's current standards or the standards that, the 2014 standards that Napa Valley was just evaluated against, this is how those expectations kind of fall in standard 4C. So standard 4C is the standard for governing boards. And each of those expectations shows up in at least one standard, if not, if not more than one standard. And one of the things that ACCJC did with our recent standards revision was to kind of simplify the structure a little bit so you weren't, there wasn't so much overlap. And we'll talk about that in a minute. And then we look at the next slide. As you know, and I just want to pause here for a second, the one requirement that came out of your evaluation process from your recent comprehensive review with ACCJC was around 4C12, which was around the delegation. And so I thought we would just pause here because I know you've been having conversations at retreats and I thought we might pause and just talk a little bit about how you can use the accreditation process really to learn, again, thinking forward as you're leaning into both the follow-up report and to your education master planning processes. As ACCJC's processes are evolving, we're really trying to focus more on that forward thinking, that forward momentum, that not being punitive, but the idea of, okay, this was feedback that you received from a peer or a team of peers. How can you use that to continue your own learning? And I understand that one of the values that you're incorporating and you're discussing is part of your mission and vision discussions that you're having is around the idea of becoming a learning community or a community of learners. Let's, we can go to the next slide. ACCJC is really evolving to use the accreditation frame, the standards and the framework processes as an opportunity to look forward and answer these four questions on a regular basis. So what did you do? You know, in this case, if it's, we're talking about standard 4C12, which is around the idea of delegation. So what have you been doing? What was the outcome of those actions? When you think about the results, what are you learning from the results of those actions? And how are you going to use that, that learning to think about what you might do differently? And to, and then you follow that arrow back up to the beginning. You have a new action, you say, okay, how did that work? What have we learned? What was the outcome? What did we learn from that outcome? How does that help us lean forward into what we want to be next? So it's more of the, you know, accreditation has talked about continuous improvement and that's certainly true. This is really about continuous institutional learning, continuous institutional reflection, checking in on where you are and saying, okay, the pieces that we took, that was part of a particular context. The context has changed. What do we want to do now? What did we learn from that experience, whether it was positive or negative? There's always learning. I recently, I think it was Nelson Mandela's birthday was celebrated earlier this week and I saw someone had shared a quote with me. And he, it was a quote from Mr. Mandela and he said, "I never lose, I win or I won't." And that's really what this is about. If you, even if it doesn't go the way that you anticipate, if you're learning from the experience and applying the learning, you're still developing and you're still growing. So with all of that said, I want to talk, I want to hear from you a little bit about your experience with this. Can we go to the next slide, please? So as you've been thinking about the follow-up report, about the team's report and the things that the team shared with the institution, how has your understanding of where you're at in your governance process, how has that evolved? What are you moving from and what are you moving to? Thoughts? There's no right answer here, by the way. This is where you have time for you just to reflect and share with each other.
Well, I think from a policy perspective, I know that we had always kind of gone through a checklist and updating as legal updates come along. But I just feel over the past, I think, couple of years, and Catherine, thank you for your help too. I think you've been a great leader in this regard is how we're really thoughtfully and strategically organizing how we update and review each board policy instead of kind of, I don't think we ever do it necessarily in a piecemeal fashion, but it's just a lot more organized and structured and there's a great amount of logic to it. That's my addition, Trusty Rios.
Well, on that point, I think in the past, I've been here for quite a while now. And I think in the past, there were times when policies were being revised and saying, these are the board's revisions. And we're going, well, we never even knew that those policies were being revised. You know, so what do you mean there are revisions? So we had, you know, issues with that. And now that the process has been changed and the procedure, it's much better. I mean, we do see what's going on, we see what things are going to be changed and how. And while all the implementation, everything gets delegated to the CEO, we're more aware now with the new process, when that's happening and how that's happening and who's involved.
Yeah, that's great. Other observations or reflections on how you're evolving and how you're governed, your thoughts about?
I feel like you have the two old, like veterans and then our two, not freshmen, I guess she is our sophomores this year.
Yeah, as a new trustee, you know, seven months ago, I had no idea that somebody could bring to the board a board's revisions that the board wasn't aware of. I didn't know something like that could even happen. So everything is, is new to me.
Everything is new. Yeah, okay, that's great. I think having people with new perspectives is always very helpful. That's why it's nice to have a mix of people who have had long tenures on the board as well as people coming in with fresh perspectives and fresh eyes because you'll see things and ask questions about things that others won't. You'll see it from a different perspective. So that's great. Other thoughts?
And I'm going to put my foot in my mouth, I know it, but I just, you want to have a candid, in a discussion, Dr. Powell, like closures. I kind of had, and you said, in terms of, we're taking these points of criticism, constructive criticism, right, where we're trying to learn from it, right? But I did, in looking at, you know, in terms of board delegation, I thought there was, and again, this is me being defensive and I'm supposed to be totally candid about that. I didn't see a whole lot of, I think, evidence in the record, I guess, of what exactly those particular issues were. So I think to have this conversation, be nice to kind of know. I do, it seems like the report with respect to the specific policy accreditation standard, that it was more in kind of a little bit of a microcosm of a vacuum of a really challenging time for our district with a lot of transition over a period of a year as opposed to, what is the accreditation period? Is it six years? I should probably know that.
Seven.
Seven, yeah, so seven years. So as opposed to kind of looking at, it was like a focus on, like a really challenging, actually not even that whole 18 months, probably even more of a narrow provision on a few. So I didn't, I didn't see it. So I guess, like I've said, I'm totally admittedly being a little defensive on that. But I just, I mentioned that too, if this, liked this to be a learning process and understanding exactly what those points were with respect to delegation, considering that we had, you know, three or two interns, you know, in a period of three months and then a period, I think, of less than a year, you know, three superintendents.
Absolutely. Yeah, I think that's a, I think it's a fair, a fair thing to share that comment and I'm glad you, I'm glad you shared that. I was thinking about this on the, you know, we talk a lot about staying in lanes and what are people's lanes, you know? And as I was driving up here today, I was on a, I was on the 101. So I was coming from the south. It was on the 101 in a place where there were five lanes of traffic, four or five lanes of traffic. And there was a big, in the lane next to me, a big piece of a car. Clearly, there had been an accident that they hadn't cleaned up completely. And so the person in the lane next to me swerved into my lane to avoid it. Absolutely, I mean, it was a, you know, it's illegal to be in two lanes at the same time, but absolutely defensible. The maneuver that they made made sense given the context, you know? And so they, I could have beeped at them and said, hey, you're in my lane, I see this. They'd been driving in their same lane and it had been great for the last, you know, 30 miles up the road. And then one thing in the road, they had to swerve around it. The question is, what do you do next? So what did that person do next? I beeped at them and they said, okay, no, I'm going to be upset and I'm going to stay driving in both lanes or I'm going to wave and say, yep, I see you and go back into their, into their normal lane, which is of course what happened. And I was thinking about, first of all, how necessary it was for them to make that swerve. It made complete sense, it was absolutely appropriate and it kept them and their passengers safe, you know? Had they continued in that way though, it was something, and again, they've received my feedback and they were like, yep, we heard you beep. And then they went on, you know? And I hope that, what I hear you saying is that that's kind of the spirit that you're receiving, the team's response. And it's like, yeah, okay, you're beeping at me a little bit, but we're going to take that and we're going to say, this was, there was something in our road, we swerved around it and now we have an opportunity to say, where do we want to be going forward? What lane are we going to be in going forward?
That is the most incredible anecdote I have heard of.
It's a true story, it actually, it happened.
A plus, A plus.
Well, no, as I said, I really, I really appreciate that you brought that up because I think it, I think it reflects the reality of your situation and the reality of what happened. And again, I, the way that ACCJC is evolving is recognizing that like, okay, when the team was here, they saw something. They don't have all the context that you have, but they want to beep at you a little bit because they're interested in you being safe. That's really their interest. They want to make sure that you see what they see. Even if there's additional context, they're saying, we want you to have a conversation about it and we want you to take a little bit of, of course, correction. So, yeah, so certainly appreciate the comment.
So I would just, I want to support Jeff in this because I had the same reaction to this and I think I mentioned it to Dr. Powell. And, you know, I, again, being here so long, I remember when I first started that we had, you know, a little kind of a work group or something over in the pack about these issues in governance and the different roles. And so I've been aware of that ever since and feel like I've always, you know, adhered to that. And so when I saw that, I'm going, well, what are you talking about? You know, because there, of course, there are no specifics in the comments there. And so I had to take a step back and say, well, wait, I may feel like I'm pretty sure I didn't do anything, but I know we have new people and there are different circumstances and maybe something happened. But I did have the exact same reaction to it. And I think more of it that, you know, so you say, well, what did you learn? And what are you going to do? Part of it was, well, I don't have any specifics. I don't know exactly what happened. So am I supposed to guess and then say, okay, well, I will address this in this certain way? You know, but I don't really know what it was that happened other than in general that someone or someones said that, you know, the board or somebody on the board, you know, kind of stepped out of their lane. But I don't know what it is or what it was. So I don't really know what would I do to avoid that.
Sure, sure, thank you for that. And I think, I think whenever there's, there's feedback that's coming that's a little bit like, well, I didn't expect that. I would be surprised if you didn't feel a little defensive, if you weren't sort of scratching your head. You all care so much about this college and the work that you do and that's very, that's very evident, it's very evident. So I would be surprised if when somebody says, hey, we see a place where you could do something a little bit better, that you're, especially if they're not clear in saying what the specifics are. I can see, I can totally understand why the initial reaction might be, well, I don't know, ouch, that hurt, you know? What I would suggest is even if it's not, even if the specifics are not clear, you can take an opportunity to say, okay, well, we have had some transition. Maybe even if we're not sure what they saw, we could have an internal conversation about how do we delegate? What are the results of the delegation that we're doing now? Is this the really, are we establishing a good relationship with our CEO for moving forward? What do we want to be moving forward? And again, having that opportunity to have the conversation with yourselves as a collective, as a board, having that conversation with your CEO, even if it's, I mean, it's a way of using, again, as I said, leveraging the process to really help you think about where are your areas for development. So my suggestion would be that if it's possible to take the feedback in that, through that light, that that's how you accept it. And then, you know, say, here's how we delegate and work on that in the report and then continue on down that road. You know, you say, here's what we're doing, we think we're doing it really well. We're going to go forward from here. Yeah, thank you for bringing that up. I certainly understand.
If I could add one quick comment.
Sure.
And it's going back to, I think, my first few weeks on the job when we, we held the trustee retreat in fall of '22 and we were here in this room, you know, establishing what our board goals for that year would be. And it was such a fascinating process for all of us, I think, because we were firmly in that position where we were asking ourselves, what's appropriate, you know, as a board goal? And as a board goal, by extension, what's appropriate for a board to actually engage in actively throughout the course of the year? You know, how do you establish and set expectations for me and the institution to ensure that we're, you know, really being responsive to community needs? And a comment kept coming up, and actually it was Trusty Rios, you said it several times, right, you said, that's not our job, that's his job, right? He pointed at me and I thought, you know, that's, it felt very good as a CEO to hear that, right? The affirmation that, one, the understanding that, you know, the functioning, the day-to-day functions of running the organization are my responsibility and that I'm responsible and accountable to you all to ensure that we uphold what your standards and requirements are. And so for me, when I saw this requirement, out of all the requirements that were listed, to me, it was, it was the one with the lowest bar and threshold to clear. Because in the year plus that I've been here, the year and maybe two weeks that I've been here working at Napa Valley College, it's never really been an issue or a problem or area of concern for me with respect to boards, you know, you all as trustees, being supportive and knowing what the appropriate role is. So, you know, no, I've said that several times before, but I do think it's important to reiterate that here in the training as well.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks for sharing that. And certainly, you know, based on what I see and what I hear, I just want to echo what Dr. Powell has said. You all, you all are very engaged. And then when I think about the from to that Chair Dodd was just talking about, you know, moving from a checklist to something that's very organized, very intentional, moving to a place where, you know, you have ownership and awareness of the policies that are coming to you. You have a sense of, you know, this is, we're engaged and informed as you're seeing the way that the policies are changed. So I think that's a really good sign. Can we move on to the next, the next slide? Okay, okay, go. You want to share?
I've had a question about the, so the CCLC generates the templates for us, for the board policies. And they've recommended that there's a delegation of authority to the CEO. We have that policy in place. And then they also say in their implementation handbook, in the policy implementation handbook, that there should be a statement in wherever appropriate in each board policy delegating to the CEO to develop procedures. And we've had a tendency at this college over the past 10 years, say, to, to change that so that instead of the CEO shall develop procedures, we say, shall ensure that procedures are developed, like somebody else is going to do it. So in my view, when you have a board policy, that's the voice of the board, telling the CEO what he should do. It's not saying the CEO should then find somebody else to do it. So it's concerned me, but I don't know if that's part of the problem. It wasn't raised in the issue, but we have this statement varies according to who was in office or, you know, who were the leaders at the time. So sometimes it says the CEO shall rely primarily on the academic senate or the CEO shall ensure that these are developed. But, but in my view, we should be very clean with that. The board should speak only to what the CEO, they're delegating to the CEO and not further down the line.
Yeah, that's our opinion on that. Well, and that's outside the scope of the top, that we could do a whole day's retreat on just that topic. And I think you've been doing some work with CCLC in the collegiality and action around some of those issues. I will say, you know, I think they're local decisions and I think, you know, CCLC provides good guidance, but they're really local decisions at the end of the day that you have to work out together how that's going to go.
Be starred as an accreditation.
No.
You wouldn't say, oh gee, you're delegating.
Right, right. So we want to see the outcomes of the delegation. We want to see that you have a policy on how delegation happens and that you follow your policy. The team might say, you know, there are ways that you could make your policy more effective. You need to check in and make sure that that's working the way that everyone needs it to work. But getting into the weeds of the individual, the way the policies or the procedures, the implementation procedures are written, again, varies a little. I don't want to say ultimately no or never because, you know, that might vary a little bit depending on the circumstances. But generally speaking, that's outside the scope of the visit.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, I want to move us along. Yeah. Okay, I want to move us along, because I want to make sure that we have time to talk about the, the new standards as well. So you've already answered this question a little bit, I think we can, we can keep going, because you did talk about, as you were reflecting on your from two, you talked about some of the changes that you're making. So I want to talk now about the recently adopted standards from ACCJC. So ACCJC is also going through its own kind of continuous learning and improvement process. And for those trustees who are, you know, longer in your tenure, and who have been here for, for many years, were you here during the last, the prior accreditation cycle as well?
Yes.
Yeah, so you remember that ACCJC has not always been what I would, I would describe as kind and gentle. I think that's, that's what we'll say. So we're going through our own evolution, where we're really trying to lean into, and walk our talk, really walk the values that we say we hold, those values in particular of peer review and collegiality. So we're really trying to have a focus on being much more collegial. We're also trying to lean into the idea of student learning and success, and equity and inclusion. And so the new standards that we've adopted, or that the commission has adopted, are a reflection of our own kind of evolution. And so I want to talk now a little bit about how those standards, the new standards, are really going to affect expectations for governing boards. If we can go to the next slide. These are the new standards. So there's four of them. They look very, very similar to the current standards. So there's, you know, the, the 2014 standards, standard work is mission, standard two is student, student learning and success, standard three is about infrastructure and resources, standard four is about governance, including board governance. So from that sense, they're very, very similar. However, they've been very streamlined, so there are fewer of them in each one of those big, big buckets. And those bars that go across, those are integrated themes. So instead of having one standard that's really about how do you align with the mission, all standards are about how do you align with the mission. So it's governance for the purpose of mission alignment. It's focus on, it's governance for the purpose of that focus on equitable outcomes. It's governance decision and decision-making processes for the purpose of innovation and improvement. Okay, so those three bars, those are expectations that are included, and really kind of baked into the structure now. They're interwoven throughout all four standards, in a, in a new, and I hope, more meaningful way. If we can go to the next slide. So this is a kind of a from two of how the standards are evaluating, evolving. So we're evolving from a set of 120 standards for you, 127 for colleges in multi-college districts. We're evolving from something that is repetitive, and long-winded, and siloed, to 30 standards for all colleges, that are very streamlined. They're, they take a holistic approach to the student and student success. They're focused on, not so much, do you have a process for X, Y, Z thing, but what is the outcome of the process? And is the outcome what you want? Is the process giving you results that are meaningful and usable? So we're really hoping that these standards are helping people have more meaningful conversations about institutional practices, and more meaningful conversations about institutional outcomes. We have 27 colleges now, that have, that are doing a pilot of the new standards. And they're not all coming through at the same time, so they're in various, various timelines towards their completion of their self-evaluation reports. But we have three colleges who are finishing up their ICers now, using these new standards, their self-evaluation reports. And I was chatting with one of them recently, just earlier this week, and they told me, you know, the first, I was talking with their faculty coordinator, so let me tell you a little story about this. I was talking with their faculty coordinator, we got onto the Zoom, the first words out of his mouth were, I'm not kidding, I've never heard this from a faculty member before, I love these standards. And I said, wow, okay, why? And he said, because they're real. I don't have to, this matches what we do every day. So that was very encouraging. When the rest of his team came in, they, they echoed his sentiment. And they also said, they were in a room with some whiteboards, and I couldn't see everything that was written on the whiteboard, but they pointed, and they said, right there, it says outcomes first. Because this is making us start with our outcomes, and write backwards from that, and then saying, are the outcomes what we want? So that's very encouraging to me. And I hope that, again, thinking about this from the board expectation, and your roles as fiduciaries for your community, so setting those high goals, and saying, how do we know that we're meeting those, those expected outcomes? I'm really hopeful that that's encouraging to you as well, from that, from that perspective. We can go to the next, the next slide? Okay. So if you look back to those expectations for governing boards that we, we talked about earlier this afternoon, this is how they map to the new standards. So instead of having all of that overlap, so that it's kind of threaded, there are, there are three standards now, that speak directly to board governance. And those high-level, high-level concepts around establishing the goals and maintaining a policy focus, those are really in standard 4.4. Hiring, evaluating, and delegating are in 4.5. And then thinking about board effectiveness, and your, how you are acting collectively together, and being consistent with your bylaws, that's 4.6. They're included in the slides here, so I'm not going to read all of them, but I do want, we'll kind of flip through them. So if we can go to the next. So you can see, they're similar. They're written in, in a way that I think is clearer, more clear, to your point about what are the expectations, and how do we know that we're meeting them? The standards themselves have not always been clear about what they're asking for. So the revision, the, one of the goals was to make sure that there was clarity and agreement about what the expectations are. If you can click through, we're going to have the review criteria there. I'll leave this for you, you don't have to read them all now. Let's go on to the next one. Here's the one that is about hiring and delegation. You can click to the review criteria. Then if you can, and you can see, that's kind of squishing, that's okay. It's squishing together concepts, and like, giving you kind of that map. So if you want to go back and see, how is what you wrote in your ICer, how was what was written in standard 4C, how was that going to morph and kind of evolve into the new standards, you can kind of walk that across more. But here you have, as I said, ground, acting as a collective, and you can click through, go up into the, the review criteria, and then go on to the next slide. Okay. So I don't know if, that was a very quick introduction, I just wanted to pause and say, first blush at reading those, or being exposed to those, does anything strike you about those standards? Good, bad, or indifferent?
What strikes me is, it seems pretty common sense. Set goals, keep them, follow your own policies.
Yeah, okay, I like that, common sense. I like that. Accreditation standards hasn't, haven't always been referred to as common sense before, so I really appreciate that. Other thoughts?
Well, I've always been amazed at how, like, Dr. Warnall, and everybody that works on these reports and everything, when you looked at all of those standards, like you said, there were so many, and so much overlap, and, and process, and procedure, and all this. You know, I'm a lawyer, I'm like, I wanted to cross all this stuff off. I'm going, how do you even know what you're supposed to be doing? You know, when you look at this, I think.
Yeah.
So this seems a lot clearer, straight, more straightforward.
That was, thank you. That was one of the goals. And, you know, we can talk a little bit, if you're interested, about how the standards were developed. But I'll tell you that it was a collaborative effort. It involved the initial teams that did the writing and the development of the draft, and Priscilla was on one of our writing teams. There were 85 people involved in drafting these 30 statements, from 65 member institutions. So both in California, and Hawaii, in our Pacific Island members. So it's really a collective lift. But one of the goals was, just as you were saying, is like, we want these to be clear, we want the expectations to be clear, we don't want standards that are like, five sentences long, that have all of these other things and contradictions kind of baked into them. We want review criteria to help us understand what, what's expected from each standard. So that's how we arrived at, at the, at the final document. So, yeah, other thoughts on your, your initial reactions? Okay. Yeah, okay. So I want to leave you with just this idea. If we can go to the next slide. Yeah, there we are. I just want to leave you with this idea. So certainly, this is, as I mentioned, that we have 27 colleges that are engaging in, in self-evaluation work, using the, the 30 new standards. Part of their template that we give them, is to kind of reflect on these four questions for each standard. So these questions, and this idea of continuous learning, continuous growth, continuous improvement, that's kind of baked into the new structure. But I also just want to suggest to you, particularly as you're, you're embarking on this education master planning effort, and new strategic planning, essentially, you're doing vision work, you know. This is a general, these questions are a general framework that you can use for any kind of continuous improvement process, or any time you want to say, okay, how do we keep learning and evolving? You know, thinking about, what was, what was it that we did? Or what is it that we are planning to do? What is, what do we think the outcome is going to be? What do we want to learn from that exercise? And once we have that information, what are we now going to, how are we going to apply that information and do something differently in the service of our educational goals? So, you know, I want to leave you with these as just questions that you can use, not just in accreditation work, but anytime they're useful, in, in the event that they are useful. Are there any questions? We have a few more minutes, I think. But if not, I will, that's the end of my slides for, for you.
Thank you, Dr. Webb. Very helpful. Just personal reflections, you know, I'm getting ready to serve on a, on a standard, on a team, coming up in the fall for Compton. And, you know, as I look through and, and prep myself to be serving on this, I'm a little jealous, right, to see schools that go through some of this new process. I know, a little relieved that we're, we're coming on the end of our process, right? But, but also thinking about, as someone who served for many years, on teams at, at various colleges, to do the ICers, you know, the, the repetition, and, and struggling to try and, and situate the reality of the, of the college into, you know, the nature and the, and the breakdown of the standards themselves, really was a struggle, you know, to Trustee Rios's point, the complexity of this. As someone who, you know, who's, who studied public affairs and urban planning, right, where brevity is, is appreciated, it's a skill you cultivate, right, to, to expand on that, it was just really difficult, I think, to flip that. So I'm really happy to see this more streamlined, more efficient version, and, and really look forward to us going through this process on our next go-round, so.
Excellent. I will be helping you, as a, as a college, transition to the new standards through the midterm report. So, you know, as you're, as you're putting together, and I'm kind of looking at, at Dr. Powell and Dr. Warnall, but as you're putting together the follow-up report, keep these four questions in mind, because that's going to help you make that shift into the way that you'll, you'll write your midterm report. So thank you very much. Thank you for your time. Thank you again for inviting me. It's my, it's my pleasure to be your liaison. So I hope you'll feel like you can reach out anytime.
Thank you, Dr. Webb.
Dr. Webb. It is time the board will devote up to 15 minutes to hear comments regarding closed-session items. Individual comments will be limited to three minutes. Catherine, do we have any public comment?
Okay.
Seeing then, the board will move into closed session, covering public employee performance evaluation, item 5.2, pursuant to section 154957, public employee, employment, and the same for item 5.3. Thank you.